Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a public hearing on Bill 1-19, Police Officer Involved Death Independent Investigation. This bill would require an independent investigation of an officer-involved death, establish qualifications for an independent investigation of an officer-involved death, require the independent investigators to submit a final written report to the state's attorney, make the written report public under certain circumstances, and generally amend the law governing investigations of an officer-involved death. A Public Safety Committee work session is tentatively scheduled for Monday, March 25th. Persons wishing to submit additional material for the council's consideration should do so before the close of business on March 20th. If you would like to follow the progress of a council bill, the council website has a subscribe function. Go to the council website and use the "View Council Records and Legislative Updates" link to learn how. Please note that when you are called up to testify, you can come to the front table. There will be a button at the base of the microphone that you can turn on in order to speak, and then when you're finished, please turn it off as well. And also, there will be a yellow light that tells you you have about 30 seconds left, and please finish your sentence or your thought, but not your entire paragraph. Hopefully, we do have written copies of your testimony, and we will consider that as well because we want to be mindful of everybody's time. For Group A, we have Chief Ton Manger, we have Delegate Emily Shetty, Faith Blackburn, Hesse Harris, Julio Murillo, Melissa Goman, and also I'd like to call for this group Nick Assanti, who I understand is a student that needs to go quickly, so we will accommodate that so our young people can participate fully in this process. Okay, so with that, we'll start with our Chief Ton Manger.
Thank you. President Navarro, Vice President Katz, members of the county council, thank you for the opportunity to discuss this bill. The county executive and I share your view that a department should be open and as open and as accessible as possible. The executive in the police department look forward to working with you to craft legislation that will accomplish those goals. Any officer-involved death is a tragic situation. Such incidents require a thorough, accurate, and impartial investigation. These investigations are complicated, time-consuming, staff and resource-intensive, and deserve the utmost care and attention to detail. Anytime a police officer uses deadly force, the public has a compelling need to know if that use of force was lawful and justified. The public wants certainty that an investigation has been done with the utmost integrity, and they want to know how the reviewing authority came to its conclusions regarding the lawfulness or unlawfulness of the officer's actions. The bill mandates that criminal investigations be made public. I should add here that the criminal investigations already are. I understand the public's desire to know that there is an external review when there's an officer-involved death. The state's attorney already has an agreement in place with Howard County that requires such a review. For example, the officer-involved death of Robert White on June 11th, 2018. The Montgomery County Police Department conducted a thorough criminal investigation, turned that investigation over to the Howard County State's Attorney. The Howard County State's Attorney reviewed the evidence collected in this case. The evidence included eyewitness statements, body-worn camera video and audio, information from the involved officer's attorney, findings from the state medical examiner, ballistic evidence, and other forensic evidence collected at the scene. Once the Howard County State's Attorney's Office completed their review of the case, they sent a letter informing me of their findings that the officer's use of deadly force was lawful and justified. We're committed to transparency and accountability. However, we're also committed to the best practices that ensure the highest quality investigation is done. The legislation as drafted may present some operational barriers to that end. The legislation will require the county executive to ensure an independent investigation by an outside law enforcement agency. Simply put, the county executive does not have that authority to do that. He is being mandated to do something that he does not have the authority to do. This could be fixed by amending the bill to state that the county executive may seek an outside investigation. This would give the county executive the authority to work with another agency on a case-by-case basis as needed, not requiring him to do something he cannot in fact control. The current reality is that while Montgomery County State's Attorney is working on an agreement with the Howard County State's Attorney, there is no such agreement in place between the executive branches of government between the two jurisdictions. At the very least, the legislation should not go into effect prior to an agreement being in place. One of the challenges in Maryland is that we don't have a state investigative agency, as do other states. Those agencies automatically take on and are equipped to conduct investigations of officer-involved deaths. Today's alternative would depend on a patchwork of agreements among jurisdictions that may or may not have the resources at any given moment to participate in the work required. I'm certain that no one, not the executive, not the council, nor the public, wants an investigation of diminished quality and professionalism.
Thank you so much, Chief. Delegate Emily Shetty?
Thank you so much, Council President Navarro and members of the county council. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of Bill 119, the Law Enforcement, Trust, and Transparency Act. For the record, my name is Delegate Emily Shetty. I respectfully request the council pass this important piece of legislation. Bill 119 will require the county executive to ensure an investigation of any officer-involved death, requires specific parameters of that investigation, and requires that the report of that investigation be made public. While I have great respect for the incredibly challenging job that our law enforcement officers do, there is no doubt in my mind that greater transparency over tragic incidents where a civilian is killed by a law enforcement official benefits everybody. Transparency enables greater community trust in our police force, among many other benefits. In 2015, Maryland passed a law that required the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention to provide the public with information regarding each officer-involved death in the line of duty throughout the state. In 2017, the report for the prior calendar year noted 32 cases statewide of civilian deaths involving law enforcement. Thirteen were classified as homicide, nine as suicide, nine as accidental death, and one is undetermined. I'm pleased to be working with Councilmember Jawando on a statewide version of this bill, HB 983, and I thank him for his hard work on this important issue. I also thank the county council for your support, as well as the helpful amendments that you've suggested. I'm confident that Montgomery County will lead this effort and pilot this important transparency bill so that the state can follow with a statewide initiative. On a more personal note, this bill is very important to me as the spouse of a person of color and the parent of a child of color. Every single day, members of our community are profiled, and in some rare cases, these instances escalate. Providing transparency in the result of these interactions is critical. I look forward to working with the county council on this effort, and thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm going to take just the last couple moments of my time and just note how incredibly amazing it is to have all of you unified behind this important legislation. It stands in stark contrast to what we just experienced at my bill hearing in Annapolis today. We had, I think, a great showing with a lot of incredible questions offered by members on both sides of the aisle. But I also want to commend the council for its great work in conjunction with the police here and bringing everybody along. Our bill hearing in Annapolis had Councilmember Jawando, myself, and the ACLU in support, and we've received and we will be submitting additional testimony from other organizations in support. But our opposing panel was a lot of law enforcement officials from across the state, so I commend you for the great work that you're doing in leading the state on this important issue.
Thank you so much for your work, Delegate Shetty. Now Faith Blackburn?
Good evening, Council President Navarro, members of the Montgomery County Council. Thank you for holding this hearing to receive comments on Council Bill 119, the Law Enforcement Trust and Transparency Act, introduced by Councilmember Jawando. My name is Faith Blackburn, and I am here on behalf of the Montgomery County Chapter of the National Association for the Advancement of Color People, the NAACP, and I am Chair of the Political Action Committee for the branch. For 110 years, the NAACP has been in the forefront of securing racial equality and civil rights for all. Here in Montgomery County, the NAACP has forged relationships with community and county leaders, including the county police chief and department, to protect and promote civil rights for every resident of the county, particularly African-American and communities of color. Our interest in this bill and support of its enactment is based on over 50 years of advocacy on the behalf of people who are often marginalized in the county. If enacted, the Law Enforcement, Trust, and Transparency Act will require independent investigation of all police-involved shooting resulting in death. The LED Act will ensure a fair, independent, and impartial inquiry when those unfortunate events occur. According to the Montgomery County Police records, in 2017, Montgomery County Police documented 523 incidents of use of force, which include use of force in one out of 2037 arrests. There were three uses of deadly police force in 2017. Two-thirds of all use-of-force incidents in a county involved people of color. Currently, the Howard County law enforcement officials investigate and review Montgomery County incidents of an officer-involved shooting. This process has led to community concerns regarding transparency and impartiality. For instance, in the death of Silver Spring resident Robert White, an unarmed African-American man who was committing no crime at the time, the investigation by Howard County officials took over three months. The report was released to the public with less than two pages and offered little explanation for its finding that the officer should not be criminally charged. This outcome is difficult to reconcile with limited video footage released while continue to await with the outcome of Montgomery County Police Department. We believe that this bill will help the community have faith in a process used determining whether a fair and transparent process been pursued in these instances. We support the bill necessary to steps to restore community trust and urge the council to pass this bill.
Thank you so much, Ms. Blackburn. Hesse Harris? Please press the button at the base of the microphone, right there. Yeah, all right.
The opposition to this bill is not with its goals, but rather the methods put forth for reaching them. There are three factors here at issue: discretion, accountability, and public safety. A police officer must at times make split-second decisions and must have the discretion to do so. That is especially the case when the use of deadly force is at issue. When dealing with situations such as suicide by a cop, a mass shooter, or a hostage taken, they cannot effectively do their jobs if they have to be concerned with whether taking the action they deem appropriate puts them at risk for incarceration. At the same time, if an officer employs excessive force in a situation, he must be held accountable. In both instances, the overriding concern is for public safety. The bill's requirement that the independent investigative report be made public will have a chilling effect on the investigation. Witnesses will not be forthcoming with information if they are concerned that their statements will be disclosed publicly. Furthermore, releasing such reports means the investigation will never end, as individuals and other entities not privy to the means and methods of investigation may continue to have questions regarding the outcome and wish to weigh in with their thoughts and concerns indefinitely. At the same time, the public needs to know what happened and why. Therefore, the issuance of a summary report would meet that requirement. It should be a summary of the facts, a statement of the decision, and a detailed statement of the rationale for that decision. While the shooting may not result in a criminal charge, it does not mean that the officer's actions are above reproach. It is then rightly a personnel matter, subject to disciplinary actions such as suspension, demotion, or warranted termination. In spite of the extensive training, skill, and experience, there are instances where an officer's actions reveal a lack of the requisite judgment or requisite skills for the job. The resulting situation may warrant criminal, may not warrant criminal sanction, but it's clear that person does not, should not have the job. That person should be employed, should not be employed as a police officer. That could be, that person could be reassigned, offered other employment, or terminated. There are several additional factors that have to be considered in making that decision: the age, the health, and length of service, previous record of the officer. There are many stakeholders here. On the one side, there's the public seeking accountability, the community organizations, interest groups, administrators, and the county council. On the other side, it's the policeman whose job is to protect and serve, his colleagues, the police union, the police administrators, and the public expecting and seeking protection and security. The two sides need to get together and come up with a system that satisfies the need for discretion, accountability, and public safety as discussed herein. Thank you.
Thank you. Julio Murillo?
Good evening, Council President and council members. My name is Julio Murillo, Government and Strategic Relations Specialist at CASA. CASA is the largest immigrant community organization in the mid-Atlantic region. We have over 33,000 members in Montgomery County alone. Our mission is to create a more just society by building power and improving the quality of life in working-class and immigrant communities. We commend the council for their leadership and for being a strong ally of working families and immigrant families, and for considering the Law Enforcement, Trust, and Transparency Act. CASA has a robust community organizing department with a presence in Germantown, Gaithersburg, Aspen Hill, Rockville, Silver Spring, and Long Branch. And part of our model is to convene members in these communities to discuss the issues they are facing. At times, the issues change, but sometimes they don't. And one of the most common issues tends to be related to community and police relations. Fear and lack of trust in police is one of the biggest challenges for our members. Unfortunately, that fear and lack of trust may discourage some from reporting a crime or if they were a victim of a crime. This is not an issue that's unique to the immigrant community; it's an issue for people of color in general. While some immigrants may have additional concerns when interacting with police officers, the fundamental problem is that the relationship between the community as a whole and the police needs to improve, and we believe that Bill 119 helps us strengthen that relationship. We want our members to feel safe and confident when they're interacting with police officers, but with what's going on across the nation and what happened unfortunately here in Montgomery County with Mr. White, that adds tension to a fragile community and police relationship. The Law Enforcement Trust Act, Enforcement Transparency Act, will serve as a tool in the community policing toolbox to help strengthen that trust between the community and police. This is a common-sense bill. It addresses two key issues, in our opinion: transparency and the access to information. In order to restore trust, begin the healing process as a community after a police officer-involved death, there needs to be an independent, non-biased, transparent investigation. Unfortunately, we learned that the hard win in Montgomery County, but we feel that Bill 119 will move us in the right direction. In conclusion, this is an opportunity for Montgomery County to show their commitment to improving community policing and advancing criminal justice. Bill 119 sends a strong message to communities of color that in any, in the case of the unfortunate police officer-involved death, there will be a transparent and independent process that will seek the truth. Lastly, we encourage you to please pass this legislation, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Melissa Goman?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to testify tonight. My name is Melissa Coritz-Goman, and I'm offering this testimony in support of Bill 119, the LED Act, as an expert in juvenile justice, a Silver Spring resident, and on behalf of Jews United for Justice, an organization that includes 5,000 Marylanders all working to advance economic, racial, and social justice. I'm going to be summarizing my written testimony tonight. Our tradition teaches us that you should love the stranger as yourself. We consider the stranger any person who differs from you, perhaps is of a different race, ethnicity, ability, or culture. Those perceived as strangers are all too often treated as threats with tragic results, such as in the case of Robert White. The tragedy of his death by police officer shooting was compounded by the lack of transparency and accountability, the decision not to indict the officer responsible, and no full accounting of this decision to the public. We have a moral imperative to seek to correct this problem. Transparency and accountability are particularly important in our diverse Montgomery County community. Communities of color have a longstanding history of inequitable treatment by the police and justice system in the U.S. Through my work as the Senior Policy Counsel for the National Juvenile Justice Network, I've researched this issue and found huge disparities in youth contact and treatment by the justice system. In recent data, 80% of incarcerated Maryland youth are people of color. In Montgomery County, this rises to nearly 100%. Additionally, youth of color are killed by police nationally far, far out of proportion to white youth. It is rare nationally for police officers to be charged with, let alone convicted, of homicide. Councilmember Jawando's legislation is a critical step towards transparency and accountability for law enforcement. But Montgomery County needs to go further to ensure that investigations are independent, impartial, and transparent, and that the community plays an integral role in these critical cases. So we recommend the following amendments to the bill. First, to make the report of the investigation public regardless of whether the officer is prosecuted. Second, in addition to officer-involved deaths, to include cases where an officer has caused someone serious bodily injury. Third, to convene a study to make recommendations regarding how to best conduct civilian oversight of law enforcement, such as having a civilian observer participate in the investigation, and how best to ensure independence in investigating the cases. And finally, to provide that the act takes effect within 90 days. We appreciate Councilmember Jawando's leadership on this issue and the support of the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nick Assanti?
Good evening, County Council President Navarro and members of the Montgomery County Council. My name is Nick Assanti, and I'm a sophomore at Richard Montgomery High School. Throughout my whole life, I've been told that I'm just a black boy living in a white man's world. I've been told that for the rest of my life, people are going to judge me without getting to know me, making assumptions based solely on my skin tone, told that I'm going to have to work twice as hard as my white peers to get half the recognition. For centuries, African-Americans alike have been fighting for equality, fighting to be treated as more than just second-class citizens, and an extreme amount of progress has been made. But still, in 2019, we hear stories from all across the nation about police brutality aimed towards blacks, stories about the unfair treatment of blacks in the courtroom in comparison to whites, stories about how the media continues to antagonize African-Americans, painting them in a negative light. Montgomery County boasts some of the most diverse cities in our nation and is often regarded as one of the most diverse counties in our nation. And so you would expect that racial discrimination in an area which cultural and ethnic diversity is so rich would be virtually nonexistent, and yet you'd be wrong. Personally, I've experienced racial profiling in almost all aspects of my life here in Montgomery County. Whether it's been in an elementary school classroom where most of my peers have been white, and a teacher has called me out by name and repeated instructions to me in simpler terms because they felt as if I wasn't able to comprehend information the same way as my non-black peers. Or when my friends and I have gone to 7-Eleven during our lunch period, and the store owner has followed me around the store, watching my every move, making sure I don't steal something while my non-black friends get to roam around freely. Or even when my non-black friends have doubted my academic abilities solely because of my race, time and time again. Racial profiling is undoubtedly prevalent in our county, and on Monday, June 11th, 2018, Robert White was shot by a police officer. Whether or not this incident was motivated by racial prejudices, it's fair to say that police brutality aimed towards blacks on the basis of race is a major issue, and I'm absolutely bewildered and frightened that the Howard County State Attorney's Office decided not to pursue the investigation for reasons left unknown to the public. Councilmember Jawando, along with cosponsorship from various other council members, has proposed Bill 119, the Law Enforcement, Trust, and Transparency Act. This ensures that all incidents in which a civilian's death is caused by a police officer is thoroughly investigated in a transparent and non-biased manner by a highly qualified third-party investigator, and I, a 16-year-old black student that has been racially profiled his entire life, wholeheartedly support this bill. With only three other locations nationwide with policies of a similar nation, nature, this bill would set the notion that Montgomery County does not support discrimination on the basis of race. The Montgomery County upholds our Constitution's Due Process Clause under the Fourteenth Amendment, and that Montgomery County values justice for all of its residents. And so, claim members of the county council, I urge you all to support the Law Enforcement, Trust, and Transparency Act. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Assanti, for being here this evening. We really appreciate your testimony, and we hope that you will come back and testify on many other issues as well. Councilmember Katz, who is also the Chair of the Public Safety Committee.
Well, thank you, Council President, and congratulations, Mr. Assanti. You did a great job. But my question is to the chief. You didn't get a chance, you were close on your three minutes, but you didn't get a chance at the end. Your ending statement says, "In conclusion, there are serious operational issues that deserve and need serious attention. The administration and police department are committed to working with you to make certain our actions are transparent and accountable to the public." And I appreciate that, and we're certainly going to go through that during the Public Safety Committee. But could you touch on some, if not, well, we certainly will do the rest during, or if there are the rest, during Public Safety Committee, but could you touch on a few of those for us, please?
I'd be happy to. I think a better discussion will be at the Public Safety Committee, but just, please understand, and I hope I said enough in my testimony, we are committed to transparency and accountability. This is, this is, we are all, I think, on the same page with that. My issues and my concern is, first and foremost, that mandating that the county executive get an outside law enforcement agency to do a criminal investigation is not something he has the authority to do. I'm concerned that if he's unable to find this outside agency, then we're not in compliance with the law. And so, we've got to, we've got to address that. But the other issue is, let's say we could, and by the way, I don't know, Councilmember Jawando, if you're aware, I think you may be. Three years ago, I tried to do this. I tried to get an agreement with a neighboring county or a neighboring jurisdiction to assist us with an officer-involved shooting when we needed it. And certainly, the case of Robert White may have been one that I would have asked another agency to assist us with. I got no takers. I spoke with neighboring jurisdictions, I spoke with the state police. Everyone said, "No, they don't have the resources, don't have the interest," and they didn't care to have us help them. So I just was unable to get an agreement done. So I'm not, I'm not opposed to an impartial outside investigation. What I can't have as the chief of police in this county is a response time that leaves a victim a body in the street for hours waiting for someone from another jurisdiction to get there. Who, I want the questions answered. Who collects the blood evidence, the ballistic evidence, the DNA? Who's going to get there quick enough to get the witnesses and interview the witnesses? Who's going to go notify the next of kin? Who's going to go to the hospital with the body? Who's going to interview the officers at the scene? Because all of that has to happen immediately. That all, and we will send a team of eight to 10, sometimes a dozen detectives out on the scenes of these things because of all things that need to be done immediately. I think that, you know, talking about what the, if these jurisdictions that have the State Bureau of Investigations, that have the resources, have all the capabilities, have the staffing to go out and take over those investigations in a timely fashion, that makes sense. And, but unless we can figure out, unless we can have a rock-solid plan in place for the investigation to happen the way it's, the way it should happen, we need to work on this. And because if the public has questions now, when I can at least, and I went to many meetings and answered many questions from many residents about Robert White's shooting, a lot of people weren't happy with my answers, but they, but they got all the information that I could give them. What happens when another agency is responsible for the investigation, and someone wants to hold me accountable, and I have to say, "I don't know, I don't know what's going on?" And do you think that a chief from another jurisdiction is going to come down here and go to meetings in our jurisdiction? I don't know that we can make that happen. And so, there's things we need to talk about, there's things we need to work through. And I will say this, I have thought through a lot of these, and I think we can work, and maybe we can have some of the conversations at the Public Safety Committee to work through some of these issues, because, again, transparency, accountability, a full report on why someone makes, or is making the decisions that they make, I'm all for that, absolutely all for that.
Thank you, chief. I look forward to the conversation at the Public Safety Committee.
Councilmember Jawando?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, chief, for the answer. You brought up a couple of conflicting things. You started by saying, "I tried to do this with neighboring jurisdictions and the state police." This being this bill, having an agreement, having an agreement to investigate police-involved deaths, neighboring jurisdiction, state police, when requested. All the issues, the litany that then followed of operational issues would have still been present at that time. And this bill is being implemented in other places. There's counties in California, there's statewide efforts in Wisconsin and Utah, there's the Georgia case that you mentioned where it's statewide, and I think that's why Delegate Shetty's here, and Senator Jill Carter from Baltimore has introduced a companion bill to do this statewide. I do think the best way is to have it done statewide. But when you have a police officer or B-cop involved in some sort of incident and a death occurs, they're going to secure the scene and call in the experts, whether it be coming from two miles or 20 miles, they're going to call in somebody, and the scene can be secured. That wouldn't change, in my view, in this, with this legislation. To your point about the county executive must having to do it, I think we've already laid the groundwork in Howard County with County Executive Ball, with their new police chief, to, they are interested in doing this. That being said, my understanding is the county executive is interested in doing this. So I think the details of how the memorandum of understanding is worked out would be left to the county executive and to the police chief to work out with the neighboring jurisdiction. But I think we need to send a strong message that we need independent investigations. This is a recommendation from President Obama's 20
This is a recommendation from President Obama’s 2015 Twenty-First Century Policing Task Force, that these investigations should be independent to increase public trust. And I believe that we can lead here and show how to do that.
Okay, thank you. So, we are going to move to the second panel, and that would be Carleen Ponder, Laurel Ho, Melissa Clark, David Ward, Michael Rubin, and Sophia Marjanovi. All right, and we’ll begin with Carleen Ponder. There’s a button, Ms. Ponder, on the base of the microphone. You’ll turn red, you press it there.
Hi, Carleen Ponder, on behalf of ACLU Montgomery County, Maryland. The ACLU Montgomery County, Maryland joins other local groups to strongly support the passage of the Law Enforcement Trust and Transparency Act, sponsored by Councilmember Will Juwondo. Many in our community protest the lack of transparency in the investigation into the June 11, 2018, shooting of Robert White by an officer with Montgomery County Police Department. The provisions of the LET Act will provide that future investigations are conducted in a fashion that will increase community trust in the police force. While the shooting of Mr. White was found justified, many in the community are still wondering why Mr. White was approached by the police officer in the first place. We believe Mr. White had a right to walk safely in his own neighborhood without being accosted by a Montgomery County police officer. The officer has stated he stopped Mr. White because he noticed a rip in his jacket, and that Mr. White moved his hand to the right side of his body. This explanation only further served to bolster the belief that racial profiling initiated this stop. We were also dismayed to see a lack of mental health protocol displayed during the confrontation with Mr. White. We understand that all MCPD officers receive de-escalation training, which includes interacting with mentally ill or unstable persons. When it became clear that Mr. White was agitated, the officer can be heard on body cameras saying, “This may be a cop-by-suicide situation,” yet we did not see this officer engage any of his de-escalation training, but rather, he continued to pursue Mr. White with his gun drawn. To date, we have not learned if this officer who killed Mr. White was subject to any form of internal discipline for initiating the unnecessary stop, speaking to Mr. White in derogatory language, and failing to assess the need for mental health intervention once the situation became confrontational. This episode highlights the need for much greater reform in policing, not only in Montgomery County, but also in the state of Maryland. Community members have no ways of knowing if this police officer has a history of confronting members of the public, a history of complaints for his police conduct while serving as an officer. Without this information, we can’t assess the quality of hiring decisions that are made by this police department. Sadly, we’ve now learned that in the death of nineteen-year-old Anton Black in Greensboro, Maryland, that officer was actually fired from working in law enforcement from Delaware, and then he came over to Maryland and was able to get a job. We don’t want this happening in Montgomery County. So, we strongly encourage this body to pass the LET Act, but this is a first step, a lot more needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Laurel Ho.
My name is Laurel Ho, and I am testifying on behalf of the Montgomery County Chapter of Showing Up for Racial Justice. Thank you for your willingness to tackle this essential issue of public safety, racial justice, and disability justice. Our position on Bill 119 is opposed unless amended. We would like to see amendments added that would add funding for mental health first responders, allow investigations to be conducted by non-law enforcement personnel, and require the investigation to be made public regardless of charges filed. We want Montgomery County to develop a program comparable to Eugene, Oregon, where mental health experts, not police, are first responders to 911 calls that involve potential mental health issues. When police respond to such calls, this increases the risk of violence and death because police are armed and are not adequately trained to deal with people with mental health issues. Eugene, Oregon, developed a nonprofit called Kahoots, Crisis Assistance Helping Out on the Streets, thirty years ago, and trained crisis workers and medics handle almost a fifth of the 911 calls there. This has not only reduced the risk of violence to people with mental illness, but it is fiscally responsible since it is cheaper to send out crisis workers than police officers. In Eugene, the Kahoots program costs the city eight hundred thousand annually compared to their police budget of fifty-eight million. We want language added to this bill that would allow investigations to be conducted by people who are not employed by law enforcement agencies. The Office of the State Attorney General already has the power, experience, and capability of conducting criminal investigations of police misconduct. There are already precedents of attorneys tasked with investigating officer-involved deaths, such as the Shooting Response Task Force in the New Jersey State Attorney’s Office, Attorney General’s Office. We understand that the Montgomery County Council cannot legislate at the state level, but we want to ensure that any legislation passed at the county level is compatible with future reforms at the state level. Ideally, these reforms would be much stronger and better if civilians were elected to a task force and trained to investigate officer-involved deaths. Montgomery County could lead the nation in this, and the language in this bill should not preclude the possibility of elected investigators specifically for police misconduct. In the interim, we strongly prefer investigations be done by a state-level agency within the State Attorney General’s Office, rather than language mandating law enforcement investigate other law enforcement. We request the following specific modifications to Bill 119. Strike 35-2B-1 and 3, and replace with “who are employed by the Office of the State Attorney General or are civilians elected to a task force trained to investigate officer-involved deaths.” Strike “if no criminal charges are filed against the police officer” from 35-2D, such that this point reads, “The written report must be released to the public to the extent permitted by law.”
Thank you.
Thank you for your thoughtful consideration of this serious matter.
Thank you so much. Melissa Clark.
Good evening. I’m Dr. Melissa Clark, and I’m here to testify in favor of Bill 119 on behalf of Moms of Black Boys United for Social Change and the Silver Spring Justice Coalition that formed after the death of unarmed Silver Spring resident Robert White. I’ve lived in Montgomery County for nine years. My spouse and I chose Montgomery County for its diversity and school systems. We have a daughter who’s a junior at Wheaton High School, and a son who’s in seventh grade at Silver Spring International Middle School. It’s easy for the diversity we enjoy to cause many county residents to have a false sense of security, and I’ve been told by other residents that I don’t have to worry about the safety of my son who is black because, quote, “Our police aren’t like that,” end quote, and, quote, “Our police are required to have college credit,” implying they are without internal biases or conduct issues. Moms of Black Boys United and Mob United for Social Change began as a Facebook group in the wake of Philando Castillo and other senseless killings of black men. It was started by a mom of black boys, one of whom is autistic, who wanted to provide a space for moms to share concerns, fears, and propose solutions for their sons’ challenges. We are now over one hundred and eighty-five thousand moms of black boys across the country. We have organized chapters of moms who are advocating for our sons, and our fight and our mission is simple: We want to ensure that our officers and our sons get home safely each night. As the mother of a black boy, I’ve witnessed my son’s experience as he’s grown. For example, he’s been stereotyped and perceived as older than he is when playing on the neighborhood playground, instead of being seen as a young boy able to explore freely and play with his friends. As parents, we’ve had to educate our son about the fact that society will perceive him as a threat, rather than the funny, bright, outgoing, talented teenager that he is. We have all seen horrific video footage of incidents across the country where normal behavior is suspect and young black boys and men are victimized. Adding insult to injury, in many of these situations, instead of an objective and independent investigation into officer conduct, police departments often criminalize the victim and are loath to hold themselves fully accountable. This stops now with this bill. Robert White was shot and killed by a Montgomery County police officer just a couple blocks away from where my son goes to school on June 11, 2018, shortly before school let out. The LET Act would increase law enforcement accountability and transparency. This bill would not only ensure fair due process in the wake of these horrific incidents, it would also potentially change behaviors so that these incidents do not happen as often. As the mom of a black boy, this fight is an issue that is deeply personal to me. I’m going to skip some of it. I live with a very real fear that my son might be in an encounter from which he may be seriously injured or might not recover. When my son was nine years old, we were walking our dog in the park next to our home. It was colder than I thought. I asked him to take the key back to the house and grab our jackets. There was a Montgomery County police officer sitting nearby with a clear view of our house. My son protested that he did not want to do the task, and when I pressed him about it, he said, “What if the officer thinks I’m breaking in?” My heart dropped. My son was afraid to walk to the front door of our home with the keys to get our coats because a police officer was sitting nearby.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. David Ward. Mr. Ward, please press the button there.
Good evening. I’m David Ward, and I want to thank my councilmember, Friedson, and each of the rest of you for listening to my testimony and for looking up when everyone is speaking, as well as And especially Councilmembers Katz, Alaraz, and Hucker on the Public Safety Committee, and of course, Councilman Juwondo for submitting Bill 119 for consideration. I’m not here to lecture you, I’m just a citizen, okay? I’m not with a big group. But I think our elected officials currently put our residents and our police officers at increasing risk every time we erode our community’s trust in our police department. And here’s how we do it. Let’s say our two cars bump into each other, right? We’re in the same district, councilman. And I tell you, “Hey, hey, I’ll take care of it, trust me,” and drive away. Well, how do you feel? So, how do you think black communities feel when officials say, “Oh, trust us, we’ll take care of it,” as the police investigate themselves after one of their own kills an unarmed black man like Robert White? Every time we say, “Trust us, we’ll take care of it,” the officers we put on the beat every day are at greater risk of losing the trust they require from the communities where they serve. When that trust disappears, police work gets harder, requiring more and more use of possibly deadly force, creating future confrontation, and making it all the more likely that another killing will take place. Mr. Juwondo’s Law Enforcement Trust and Transparency Act, on the other hand, builds trust in our police by having officers under investigation be investigated by someone other than their own superiors. Without the trust of the communities they serve, no matter how much training officers receive, or how much protection they get from their unions, their superiors, and county government, our cops and their communities will always risk the kind of confrontation and tragedy they did early last summer. Why risk it?
Thank you. Mr. Michael Rubin.
Good evening, Council President Navarro, members of the county council, council staff, and fellow community members here this evening. My name is Michael Rubin. I’m a resident of Tacoma Park, and I’m proud to have lived in Montgomery County for most of my life. I’m testifying as a concerned citizen tonight. I’m concerned about the lack of transparency over possible police misconduct in the death of Robert White in June 2018, and the differential policing by race that occurs daily in our country, state, and county. Bill 119, the Law Enforcement Trust and Transparency Act, is an important first step in addressing some of my concerns, but it is only a first step. The council should adopt this measure and continue to explore additional measures to deal with the lack of transparency over police protocols and policies that ensure de-escalation is the primary response, and use of deadly force is only a last resort, hopefully to be used rarely, if at all. Additionally, I urge the council to look at what I perceive to be differential police response based on the race of an individual. In my own daily travels in mostly eastern Montgomery County, I routinely observe multiple police cars and officers at traffic stops involving black and Latinx community members. This is in sharp contrast to the policing I observed for white community members, where usually the stop involves just one police car. It makes me wonder about the circumstances that led a lone officer to profile, confront, and ultimately kill Robert White last June without any backup. Granted, my observations are just anecdotal in nature, so I decided to look at statistics reported on the Data Montgomery website. For the twelve months ending 9/27/2018, I found that there were sixty-seven thousand four hundred and thirty traffic stops of whites, who are forty-three percent of Montgomery County’s population, sixty-eight thousand five hundred and two traffic stops of blacks, who are twenty percent of our population, and forty-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-two traffic stops of Hispanics, who are also about twenty percent of our population. I would expect the traffic stops would roughly mirror the proportions of the population at large, but I would not expect to find that black drivers were more than twice as likely to be stopped by police than white drivers, or that Hispanic drivers were about fifty percent more likely to be stopped than white drivers. Clearly, more data analysis is needed, but my anecdotal observations of differential policing by race appear to have some validity. I encourage the council and county executive to take seriously the lack of trust that I imagine residents of color have in our police department based on their daily experiences of differential policing. The fact that it has been nearly nine months since the death of Robert White, and we know nothing about whether the officer violated any MCPD policies or faced any type of consequences for what appears to me to be racial profiling and unnecessary confrontation of someone walking is beyond unacceptable. We can and must do better to meet the public safety of our wonderfully diverse community. Please pass the LET Act and continue to look at this issue so that we can truly be the equitable community that I know we have the potential to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Sophia Marjanovi.
Yes, thank you for hearing my testimony. My name is Dr. Sophia Marjanovic, and I am founder of the Maryland Alliance for Court Reform because I am a survivor of police misconduct, domestic violence, domestic violence by proxy, and ongoing litigation abuse. We collect a database of people, of problematic judges, attorneys, law enforcement, social workers, and therapists throughout the state of Maryland, and report the corruption to the FBI. Back in 2016, I helped organize and get people to testify for House Bill 1016 at the statewide level, and that was the first police accountability bill passed at the statewide level in the United States. The reason for that was my testimony in particular led to a provision where we are allowed to know the outcomes of investigations when police commit misconduct. I’m basically the face of what happens to people when police are allowed to abuse their power. Although I have a PhD in immunology and microbiology, I am homeless and unemployed because of the ongoing trauma I’m dealing with because of the abuse of police power. I’m supporting this bill, but with amendments. And the amendments that I propose are, one, I have very grave concerns that police investigating the police is not an independent investigation. An independent investigator should not be employed by a law enforcement agency. We need to make it explicit that the qualifications and expertise to the art of the investigation does not imply a current or former law enforcement officer. Civilians should be involved in this process of reviewing, of the investigation of police who are killing civilians. If we can have, if we can, many of you are civilians, and you are in charge of also investigations, as well as the U.S. Senate and U.S. House, where we saw very well last week, our civilian, such as a bartender known as Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez, was able to effectively investigate the wrongdoing of our president. Additionally, so we need civilian investigators to be accountable directly to the public, so they must be elected. We must release the report regardless of the charging decision to the public, and strike the language that makes the report release subject to the Maryland Public Information Act. And then additionally, and I have two more points, the charging decision needs to be made accountable to the people so that the Montgomery County, so it should, wait, yeah, the charging decision needs to be accountable to the people, and the investigator doesn’t need to report to the police, nor is paid by the police.
Thank you, Ms. Marjanovic. We will consider the rest of your written testimony. I want to acknowledge also that we have former councilmember Sherri Branson with us tonight. And let’s see, I have Councilmember Reamer.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to briefly respond. Michael, really appreciated your testimony. You You highlighted an important issue that is really about police practices and police policies. Why do we conduct the stops that we do? What is our approach to stops? What are we getting out of this? What does the data show? For the past few months, I've been working with Councilmember Juwondo on a piece of legislation that would create an advisory commission to work through those issues, to raise them, to have public dialogue about them. I think you've put your finger on an important topic. This bill is about what happens after something has gone wrong. We need to have transparency and accountability when things go wrong. We also need to have dialogue about how to have practices in place to ensure that things are going right to the best extent that we can. Thank you.
Councilmember Juwondo?
Thank you, Council President. And thank you, Councilmember Reamer, for bringing that up. It's an important point. And as I've mentioned to many of the folks here testifying, this is the start, not the end. I appreciate the amendments. We're taking lists. Please email our office ahead of the Public Safety Committee hearing, and we're going to be looking at those on an ongoing basis. So just stay in touch with us. I understand the concerns. As you've heard tonight, we have a lot of views on both sides, but I think we can find a good way to move forward. So thank you all for your testimony.
I just also want to remind the audience that, you know, not all councilmembers are going to ask questions or make comments, but that's because this is a public hearing to hear from you, and we want to be respectful of your time. There will be a March 25 Public Safety Committee session, and so if you have further comments, et cetera, please feel free to email that to the chair, and you can copy Councilmember Juwondo, who's the sponsor. But I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that that's why you're not hearing from a lot of other councilmembers, because we want to actually hear from you. Yeah, there is no public testimony, but you can submit in writing, and that can be considered by the committee. Thank you. So our next group is Katie Staus, Jade Wiles, David Hill, Mike Mage, Michael DeLong, and Marvin Whitfield. Katie Staus.
Good evening, Council President Navarro and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Katie Staus, and I'm representing Tacoma Park Mobilization. We're also proud to be part of the Silver Spring Justice Coalition, which is a coalition of 20 advocacy and grassroots organizations with residents throughout the county. We believe the LET Act is a good initial step toward more accountable policing, and we support the bill with amendments. The amendments we're requesting include putting the bill into effect within three months, making the bill applicable to officer-involved deaths as well as cases of serious bodily injury, making investigative reports public regardless of the charging decision, and maybe most importantly, creating an investigative body that includes civilians to increase true independence because police investigating police is not working in our country and it's not working in our county. These are initial but still important steps of part of a deeper urgently needed transformative change, including in mental health care, housing, education, community attitudes, and for sure policing. Robert White was killed last year by the police. From the very little known publicly, we know he was originally stopped for having a rip in his clothes and for so-called furtive movements. Using furtive movement to identify people carrying guns is questionable, and I challenge any police department, including ours, to defend the practice with evidence that it keeps communities safer. Maybe this is an issue that the commission that Councilmember Reamer and Councilmember Juwondo have proposed can consider further. To the contrary, for example, in 2012, New York City Police stopped about 700,000 residents at the height of stop and frisk. More than half of them were stopped based on, quote, "furtive movements." About one-tenth of 1% of those stopped for those movements actually had a gun. Police could have just as well stopped people for wearing blue jeans and found the same number of guns. Stops based on furtive movements are arbitrary, they have a sordid history as a form of racial profiling, and they frequently include use of force. And for that, Robert White paid with his life. Now, the public needs to know why someone who was meant to serve and protect all of us thought he should pull up aggressively on one of us for a ripped shirt and furtive movement. Is this policy? Was this training? And had Robert been stopped for no reason too many times in the past? Was he traumatized from police harassment or at the end of his rope? Did the officer recognize signs of distress or trauma? Did the officer try to de-escalate? Does the officer have a history of misjudgment or violence? We don't know any of this because there was truly no independent investigation, meaning no cops investigating cops.
Thank you, Ms. Staus. We'll consider the rest of your written testimony. Jade Wiles?
Good evening, council, esteemed council members and council president. My name is Jade Wiles, for the record, and I speak on behalf of myself, and I speak my truth this evening. I would like to start by saying that I do not believe that all police officers are bad individuals and that some officers are truly just and fair in their actions. Where I come from, people do not testify, but the stakes are too high for me not to engage this evening. My brothers and sisters often fall victim to killings committed by officers, and quite frankly, I am tired of protesting, and I am tired of marching. We need action, political will, and courage from those who are elected into office. This issue is crystal clear. Officers who kill blacks are continuously acquitted and given a slap on the wrist. The problem with this is officers who commit these acts of violence get to go home to their families, while families of those who fall slain by officers are left with grief, questions, and uncertainty. I ask you, what kind of precedent are we setting? My brothers and sisters' lives matter without question. My brothers and sisters deserve fair and equal justice without question. But who's courageous enough to stand up for those who can't stand for themselves and hold officers accountable? How ridiculous is it to leave investigations up to the very ones who commit acts of violence against my people? That's like me committing a crime, that's like me committing a crime and then allowing my family to do their investigation. We need a champion for injustices that has continuously been perpetrated in our communities, on my people. I keep referring to my people because I do not see these atrocities happening as frequent to none but to black people. I thank Councilmember Juwondo and the council staff, council members here, for being champion and introducing this legislation that would presumably hold officers accountable for acts that have ended in death of human beings committed by officers. I emphasize the word "human being" because in all honesty, I am not sure that maybe some officers do not see us as such and shoot first with the slightest hesitation because they felt threatened. Therefore, in hope of mitigating these egregious acts and crusading for a better place and in hope of obtaining justice, having independent investigations are reasonable and simply the right thing to do. I support the LET Act introduced by Councilmen Juwondo and Hope, and hope that the council vote favorably on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. David Hill?
Good evening, Council President Navarro and members of the County Council. My name is David Hill, and I'm the Chair of the Commission on Social Action at Reed Temple A&amp;E Church, a north location in Silver Spring. Reed Temple North has over 5,000 members and is one of the largest, if not the largest, religious congregations of African-Americans in Montgomery County. The Commission on Social Action has as one of its pillars the goal to advance policies and programs that vindicate the civil and human rights of our congregants and community. To that end, in the wake of numerous killings of unarmed African-Americans throughout this country, the CSA began a Policing Accountability Initiative in 2017. The Policing Accountability Initiative seeks to measure area police departments based on a series of best practices that are based on the Justice Department's Task Force on 21st Century Policing set forth under former President Barack Obama. Our four main criteria that emerged from that, both the task force and additional scholarly research, are training, education, and engagement, a culture of transparency, the institution of residency incentive programs, and the creation of law enforcement diversity initiatives. A number of the suggested action items are included in my testimony. One other primary consideration in our evaluation of area police departments is the use of external and independent prosecutors in cases of police use of force that result in death, officer-involved shootings resulting in injury or death, or in custody deaths. Relying upon these best practices, we developed a Policing Accountability Evaluation Scorecard in which we created a rating system and evaluated 28 area jurisdictions, including Montgomery County. It's the intent of the CSA to engage in dialogue, collaborate with departments, and partner in restoring trust and ensuring effective community policing practices. And pursuant to that desire to partner, engage, and collaborate, we met with Chief Manger and all of his chief lieutenants January of 2018. The follow-up, I believe, got mixed up with the issue with Robert White here in Silver Spring. We eagerly look forward to following up with the new chief and those of neighboring jurisdictions in the DMV. The LET Act would require the independent investigator, investigation of all police-involved shootings, consistent with our best practices, consistent with the goals of the CSA. The introduction of this bill here in Montgomery County is a necessary first step. We can do better. We must do better. This bill is a strong step forward, a first step, but a critical step, and we look forward to partnering with this council, with the police department, members of the community, and other organizations to get this right here in Montgomery County.
Thank you. If Ms. Nancy Wallace is here, you can go ahead and come forward. This is just one last person in the last group. All right, Mike Mage?
Good evening. I'm Mike Mage, speaking for myself tonight. Rather than repeat what others have said, let me emphasize the need for truly independent and transparent oversight and review of law enforcement and training of police officers in Montgomery County. There is a use-of-force policy which was put on the police website in 2016. Nowhere in this policy can you find any mention of de-escalation or any other techniques for avoiding use of force. When I mentioned this a month ago at a meeting of the Latino Public Safety Working Group, it elicited a 10-minute explanation from police brass about how de-escalation is central to everything they do. But it would be helpful to have it in writing. I suggest an amendment to put all de-escalation techniques and related training materials online on the police website. A related problem is the "us against them" attitude, which is made worse by groupthink, peer pressure, esprit de corps, or whatever you want to call it. This attitude gets in the way of rapport with the community. I suggest an amendment for civilian review of police training. There have been at least six cases of deaths in custody following taser use in Montgomery County, but the police are still not fully equipped with defibrillators to deal on the spot with cardiac collapse. I suggest an amendment to fully equip police vehicles with defibrillators. Nobody has a monopoly on wisdom, so oversight from non-law enforcement is also needed. I suggest an amendment to include a civilian review system. We can build on the proposal of the working group that was submitted to contract negotiations between FOP Lodge 35 and the county around the year 2005. In summary, if it provides truly independent oversight of police training, police actions, and police readiness to save lives, this bill will provide an opportunity for real progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael DeLong?
Good evening, Council President Navarro, Vice President Katz, other members. My name is Michael DeLong, and I'm the Treasurer of the Montgomery County Young Democrats. Thank you for receiving our testimony this evening. We represent a number of young Democrats between the ages of 14 and 35, and we're here to testify in support of Bill 119, the Law Enforcement, Trust, and Transparency Act. This bill will help ensure that when a police officer is involved in the death of an individual, that investigations into that officer's conduct are independent, impartial, and transparent. It will help improve public trust in law enforcement and make sure that the investigations into police-involved deaths are fair. When there is a police shooting or some other incident, our county needs open and unbiased inquiries into what happened. Without independent and thorough investigations into police shootings or misconduct, people lose trust in law enforcement, understandably. A lot of people already don't have that much trust in law enforcement. And if police officers don't have the trust of our communities, especially communities of color, they can't do their jobs, and everyone suffers. And if officers act wrongly, they have to be held accountable for their actions. And this act unfortunately results from the tragic shooting of Mr. Robert White. He was shot and killed by an MCPD officer in a Silver Spring parking lot in June 2018. MCPD conducted an investigation into his death, sent the information to the Howard County State's Attorney, they did not press charges, and they didn't release a thorough report explaining their decision. This is unacceptable. Montgomery County citizens and residents should have access to that information and the full reasoning behind that decision. We have the greatest respect for Montgomery County police officers. We thank them for their service to our county in keeping us safe, but we have to acknowledge that police brutality is a problem in America and our county. Hate and prejudice have no place in Montgomery County. This bill promotes transparency and accountability in officer-involved shootings and will work to ensure that police brutality is not a Montgomery County problem. We thank Councilmember Juwondo for introducing this bill, and we thank all the cosponsors. We urge you to vote in its favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Marvin Whitfield?
Good evening. My name is Marvin Whitfield, and thank you for the council for listening to everyone. Unlike many here, I can actually attest to knowing and loving Rob as a person, as an individual, as a brother, as a son, as an uncle, and especially for me, as the godfather of my daughter. I support this bill because at the heart of it is the victim here, Robert White. We've all laid down stats and figures about people dying and getting killed, but I want everybody to take three seconds to think about your loved ones and then think about them not being here, because that's what I deal with every day. That's what I've dealt with tonight, having to listen to countless stories and tales of others who are not here. So I've submitted my testimony, but I want you to think about that long and clear when you leave here, that your loved one is not promised, and for many of us, people of color, Hispanics, and other marginalized groups, tomorrow, today, and even the next minute is not promised. I'm here to tell you that the picture is false, the one that you saw in the video. That doesn't accurately represent the man that I've known for over 35 years, not the man who lost their mom to cancer and first turmoil that would make the strongest of us crack, but he chose to walk the streets of his childhood as a form of escape. We called it MOCO. He stood every day with me in there. Anytime I needed something, Rob was there. Anytime I tried to raise my daughter in a way that I saw was fit and couldn't do it, whether it was an ear to listen, whether it was money, whether it was food, whether it was cars, anything, that man would give me anything to support the need to make sure that my daughter could stand here today as a college graduate. He wasn't perfect, nor was he crazy, a thug or a vagabond. Something has been lost in society when we look at people, see exactly what they're going through, and instead of getting to the root of the matter, we label them as crazy, confused, or mentally ill. Rob, as he was known to his family and friends, was so many things that are positive, so many things that we don't see today in the climate that we have now. My daughter meant the world to him, and he showed her that in every single way. There's so many countless times I want to tell you about that man, but I won't do it now. He was slain in broad daylight, and the world lost a gentle, dying, and kind soul that he could recall anything. Sometimes we finally called him a historian because he could tell you something that you did when you were 12 that you probably tried to forget. I support this bill because I don't want anyone to experience what Rob's family has gone through. Unfortunately, this happens every day. The world is a safer place for people when people that have badges choose to do their job and do it in a moral and correct way. I'm not- I'm not here to bash anyone that wears a uniform. I salute you. I'm proud that you protect and serve. However, police investigations involving murder, homicide, need to be led by independent counsel, and the findings need to be accessible to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitfield. Thank you so much for your testimony, and we do our condolences, of course. Nancy Wallace.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Nancy Wallace, co-chair of Montgomery County Green Party, testifying in modified support of the bill. As many are aware, the recent rise in police-related shootings and death have brought both worry and outrage about the dependability of our local and county law enforcement. That outrage has sparked the drafting of this bill, which accounts, creates a more accountable police force in our counties and towns. And while we, the county's Green Party, applaud the council's decision to finally take this initiative, there is a matter in the current version we believe to be inherently flawed and that will eventually undermine its intended purpose. While this bill's requirement eliminates the basic conflict of internal investigations of individual departments and officers, it does not provide an impartial oversight by any persons without deep ties to the policing community. What the public desires most for accountability for our officers is having a truly independent review of a case when a public service may have wrongfully killed a member of that public. The fact that this bill has no citizen board to oversee and review these investigations means the process is still closed to the public. The bill's proposal could result in collusion and withholding of investigation details based on the strong culture of police forces, and this time from multiple police departments. We propose an amendment establishing a civilian oversight board, which has all three components of authority for these boards: to make independent investigations, to review the police department's investigation, and to audit the internal review processes. This citizen board would give the public the peace of mind that the police must be fully cooperative with the independent review, and the investigation is fully transparent. Additionally, this bill only addresses police conduct after the incident has occurred. Preventive measures should be given serious consideration in a follow-up bill in order to decrease the need for these investigations in the first place. In January of 2016, the Police Chiefs Research Forum, PERF, a group of police chiefs and commanders from across the country, drafted a 30-point Policies and Recommendations paper, which they collectively agreed provides the best guidance for police conduct that all departments should hold as a standard. This paper has a redefinition of acceptable force and many specific practical means to reduce excessive force. We request that the county implement this set of rules for our various enforcement departments to prevent unnecessary violence and killings before they happen. The need for an independent investigation by any board is fundamentally too late, though we must have transparent processes in place in case the worst happens. To summarize, we applaud any and all moves forward to hold the police more accountable and become more trustworthy for the people they serve, but we believe this bill falls short of addressing the prime concern of impartiality of the oversight, and much more needs to be done to strengthen the effectiveness of this legislation. And the core issue of avoiding the incidents that create the need must be considered as well if this bill is to have the intended effect of easing tensions between civilians and police officials. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hooker.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you all for your great testimony tonight. We heard, we've had a very good discussion, and we'll look forward to continuing it in the Public Safety Committee. I just wanted to recognize two people who didn't get a chance to sign up because they didn't think they'd be able to attend tonight, but I want you all to know that they're present. But Tori Cook and Lee Holland, the president and corporation vice president of the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 35, are in the room tonight. I've spoken with them, and I think this wouldn't be the case in many areas of the country, but the good news is the FOP supports the transparency and accountability of this bill and the exchange with the state attorney's office. So thank you all for your support for this bill as well.
Well, thank you, everybody. Drive safely home, and the Public Safety Committee, as I said earlier, will take this issue up, so stay in touch. Thank you.